Or ski. Yeah. You need to talk to that person.
Okay.
Oh, he can stand there for ten years.
Good evening. And welcome to the Henry County Commissioners Meeting, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. If you would please rise and stand for the pledge of allegiance and a short prayer. Our heavenly father, thank you for the opportunity to meet here this evening. Please guide us in our decisions and help us through this time in your name we pray. Amen. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes of last meeting? If so, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims?
Make a motion to approve claims presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the payroll?
Make a motion to accept payrolls presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have three reports. The first one is the clerk's monthly report for September of twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We also have a waits and measures report for September and October of twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We also have a treasures monthly report for September of twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion accepted as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Corey Murphy, EDC update. Thank you, Corey. We do not have a chamber of commerce update.
We don't have anybody. Tom.
Tom Green, do you have anything to say? Our plan commission.
Oh, we were on a roll and you had to run it.
Oh, yes, we we have the ordinance that we were going to get to further down the line.
Okay.
Did you have anything else?
No, no, never mind. We'll do it later.
We will call you back up later, Tom, if you would.
Well, there's thirty seconds in my life I won't get back.
Uh, we no one is here all the way down to Brian.
Brian Tru.
You have yours later as well. So now we're down to Troy. Troy, do you?
Thank you, Troy. We have some quotes. The first one would be the the Justice Center roof discussion.
So I did not have them put the quote in because because of the we did see the quote. Um, so part of the roof in the Justice Center was, um, and the reason I don't want to talk about the dollar figures because of bids, uh, part of it in the with the hurricane winds, uh, or the part of the roof was damaged. Um, so Greg had a company come out and look at it and it is at its end of life and it needs to be replaced. So I Joel is well over the threshold of just getting quotes. So do we have to put it out to a sealed bids? Uh huh. It is. It is. I just don't want to say it because I don't want people to hear what the what the one was and then, yes, uh huh. So we'll have to put that out to a sealed bid and we'll have to start that process. Um, I guess when you start that tomorrow. But, um, yeah, so Merry Christmas to everybody. We can't replace a roof.
We have item number two. Jeff with Net Network Solutions, any connect license for a value of seventeen hundred and four dollars for a three-year license.
So this was one of the things that we were looking at and and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. Originally, when we were looking at it, we were looking at, um, two hundred and fifty? And it was perpet- it was a perpetual license and was going to be around eleven. I want to say anywhere from eleven to fifteen thousand dollars. I can't remember the exact total. Right. Years to get to. Yeah. So this license for, uh, the any connect, um, instead of us paying a perpetual license of fifteen thousand dollars, we can get s- get four hundred for seventeen hundred and four dollars for a three-year license. So if you divide all that out, it would take us many, many, many years to get to that, um, dollar figure. So, uh, with that said, I will make the motion to approve the any connect license for three years at seventeen hundred and four dollars.
Say it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next, there is a another Jeff Lutz nine-star renewal for seven thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-five cents for a thirty-six month term.
Yes. So, uh, Jeff was working with Nine Star to, um, renew the contract, which originally was a five-year contract. Uh, we were very lucky, uh, because currently we pay, uh, just over eleven thousand dollars a month uh, for nine-star services throughout the county. And we were able to get it down to seven thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-five cents a month, saving roughly, I think we calculated saving roughly of thirty-six hundred dollars a month uh, for all of our nine-star services. Any questions?
Well, so what I'm reading here is we're going to save approximately a hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred and so one hundred and one dollars and seventy-two cents over the term of this.
I didn't calculate it out, but if that's what it says, yes.
There's no service change whatsoever at that point?
Um, actually, we're getting a, uh, higher, uh, speed for the internet. Um, there is some change, but only in the positive.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Um, I will make a motion to approve the nine-star contract for thirty-six months at seven thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-five cents.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next, we have a frontline Henry County Dispatch software agreement quote for three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Brian Tru.
So this is, is this on?
Yeah, it makes sure it's green.
Okay. So this covers actually two different things.
Pull your mic up.
This would cover a policy tracker and a D O R, or daily observation report, uh, program through frontline. Today, we have neither of these. Um, we're kind of in a period of time where we're developing and introducing a lot of new policies, um, in the dispatch center. So we need a way to keep track of those and distribute those to employees, make them easily accessible and searchable. Um, this also allows, uh, employees to sign off electronically that they have read, understand, and agreed to the policies. And then the daily observation reports are just part of the training program. So each day, the the trainer and trainees can go through and, um, basically see how they're doing, um, each day, rate them and track the progress. As a trainee goes from one trainer to another, uh, they can see how they've been doing and the areas that they need work on. So we we have no way to do these things currently, and this, uh, company provides both of these for this price. So we're just looking to get approval to do this. And to answer Steve's question, yes, we do have the money.
And yes, Joel has already reviewed.
And Joel has already removed reviewed it. And yes, they didn't see any issues. It's pretty simple agreement, but.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I will second it being he has the money.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the person that the quote was prepared for, Misty Rhodes. Next, we have a Duke Energy Efficiency Proposal, and we have with us this evening Rick Atkins, and he works with Wildom, who is a Duke Energy Contractor. And there's been some confusion as to what this particular proposal was for. I noticed one of the addresses on here was two hundred South Twelfth Street, which I'm not sure where that is, but can you tell us what this is about and what you're interested in doing?
Yeah. Can you hear me okay if I lean down? Okay. Um, so what I represent is Duke Small Business Energy Saver Program. And so, uh, what we would do with two hundred South, and we have to figure out where that is, I kind of inherited this project from somebody on the inside named Tony Moats. So I apologize that I'm not exactly clear because I didn't physically go do the assessment on the property. But what the scope of the work is, is we would go in all the existing fixtures in the building. We'd remove all the fluorescent bulbs. Ballast will rewire those existing fixtures to run LED bulbs in their place. And that will get you the energy efficiency of running, you know, obviously LED versus the fluorescent. Um, the proposal you have in front of you is a hundred percent turnkey. It's for our techs to come in and perform all the work, remove and recycle all the waste. Uh, everything we put in comes with a five-year materials warranty on it and a one-year labor warranty. So basically, from the date of install, anything fails in the first twelve months, we come out and fix it completely free. Anything fails in years two through five, we would send you the equipment, uh, to fix the fail.
I'm pulling up. Well, I can't find two hundred South twelve on Beacon.
So I have no idea where that is.
I don't either. Is it? The EMA office that it's almost kind of in the, no, that's still a hundred block where the EMA and on Twelfth Street, where you enter the Masonic Building on Twelfth Street, all of those other offices are in the, I don't know where two hundred South twelfth is. Is this a two hun- that's a two hundred block? It would be one of the, is that the Masonic Building? That is the Masonic Building? It has to be one of those offices that come off of Twelfth Street. Yeah, two sixteen south. That is right. Two sixteen south twelve.
One way or the other, this this gentleman, like he said, he inherited this. So I think if we're possibly, depending on what the commissioners want to do, if the commissioners are interested, even when he walked in, looked at the fluorescent lights in this building, and we have some other work that's going to be done in this building. But would it be the, uh, an interest to the commissioners for him to evaluate the the courthouse building?
I've wanted to look to see in detail what we have in the D L Z project because there's a lot of stuff going on in that project.
Right.
Uh, before we do it, I don't want to duplicate anything. Uh, because we're doing about five million dollars worth of stuff to this building. But I'm I'm still confused as to which building this is, so I I'm hesitant to make any decision tonight until we determine exactly what building we're.
Would you be able to research what building through?
Absolutely. When I leave here, I was going to walk over because I went by, I'm not that familiar with Newcastle, I have to admit, but I went by Twelfth Street, so I was going to walk around and try and find it as soon as I walk out the door. So yes, I and I'll report back whatever I find.
Twelfth and head south. That's the two hundred block.
Okay.
It's basically this building.
Right, but on the on the. Well, yeah, that's true. That is. Unless it's two sixteen is what? Is the next thing, that's the old EMA. That's the new public health area.
And we find this all the time because we have to rely on Duke's information and the billing addresses don't always match up to exactly what physical addresses are. So this isn't that out of the ordinary, unfortunately, for our program. So.
Uh, yeah. Get us some more information to make sure that we know where we're where we're looking at and make sure that we haven't done any changes with any lighting in there already.
Okay. What the proposal that I had was from August of this year. So my assumption is the assessment was done then. But once we sort out what building it is, if you want me to come back and rewalk it, just to get today's view on it, I'm happy to do that anytime for you.
Talk to Greg Brown of Joe about any of this?
No, I have not.
Okay, maybe we bring Greg into the conversation. Maybe he was a part of something that we're not aware of. Sorry to waste your time tonight.
That's okay.
I'll talk to our maintenance man, see if he knows anything, but you have my contact information.
I do.
I have yours. So if you find out something, obviously, those buildings will be closed at this hour.
Right.
The day, but, um, I don't know why someone would have done why someone that works for the county would have written down two hundred South Sixth or Main Street. That doesn't jive with anything that we have.
Okay.
So, okay. Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you guys for having me.
And I think August is when Angela started and Troy, I don't know if you remember, but isn't August about the time that Angela started the remodel of the old EMA office for the public health? Because Tim moved out in July, so it probably started around August. We may want to bring Angela into the conversation as well, just to make sure that they didn't have anybody come in. Okay.
In new business, we have an EMA Duke Energy Foundation Grant, grant number G dash twenty-four dash zero zero six for eleven thousand dollars. We have Troy Jester, front and center.
Yeah, so this, uh, I was approached by Duke, um, towards the end of their grant cycle, uh, about, uh, receiving a grant. Uh, we did it, um, applied for the grant, the auditor is aware.
You have the grant number?
Yep. So we're good there. The, um, the plan is is to use it for a gas monitor for the hazmat team uh, for Newcastle Fire Department. And then also, um, an amateur radio station for redundant communications for the emergency operations center.
And it looks like it's eleven thousand dollars?
Correct.
Is there a match?
No.
No. Oh, we like those kind of grants. I will make the motion to approve the G twenty-four dash zero zero six.
Say it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Troy. Then we have, next on the agenda is the Justice Center Annual Maintenance Contract.
So I received, uh, a maintenance contract or from Piney. Piney is the current annual maintenance contract, and I received, uh, it's not, I didn't put it in here. Um, but my question is, is do we want to have Resolve Tech also do a quote, uh, for annual maintenance and put it out? Um, to get a comparison to see if we can save any money? Was was actually my question.
Also, if it's an annual contract, I'd say we go ahead and open it up for anybody to bid it.
Yep. Okay. I agree. It's always good to see, you know, we're saving a hundred and some thousand dollars over three years for the phones if we can save uh, more money somewhere else. So, um, I'll make the motion to, uh, put this maintenance contract out the bid.
Say it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next, we have the Middletown Fall Creek Township Public Library. Debbie Harry is up for reappointment for another four years. We have a letter from Teresa Denny, Director of the Middletown Fall Creek Public Township, Fall Creek Township Public Library. I'm requesting that you reappoint Debbie Harry to another four-year term on the library board. She is an enthusiastic supporter in her work experience with H and R Block. And as a local businesswoman, has proven excellent background for the treasurer position. Debbie is definitely an asset and one we hope to keep. Thank you for your consideration of this reappointment. Debbie's term would encompass the years twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next, we have an A R A Public Meeting Owner Occupied Rehabilitation.
So on October the thirtieth, we don't have to be here, uh, here in this, uh, room at twelve o'clock will be the, um, public hearing for the owner occupied rehabilitation, uh, program. Uh, we do have, uh, paper applications and flyers that will be available in the auditor's office. And Jeff Lutz, if he hasn't already done so, will be putting them on the, um, website. There's a Q R code if they want to and they, um, uh, to access the application, um, it was published in the, it, let's see, this was on the eleventh. It was published in the paper, I think, on Tuesday. Uh, but we will have those, uh, forms available here in the auditor's office. I just wanted to make that public. That we will have both the Henry County Program File flyer and the homeowner, uh, application in the auditor's office.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution number twenty twenty-four dash ten dash eighteen in parentheses, zero one four. A resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners regarding approval of expansion of the twenty-twelve Consolidated Economic Development Area and creation of the Dubinger Allocation Area, Marla Field Allocation Area, and New Lisbon I seventy Interchange Allocation Area.
Good evening. I'm Jim Melikin, attorney with Defer, and back, um, after you passed, you you approved the the resolution on October ninth. We then publicized and conducted a public hearing to receive input on October twenty-first. Um, and the R D C, uh, adopted the amending confirmatory resolution. We're back here now asking that that you, uh, approve the resolution uh, expanding, uh, and creating allocation areas for the R D C.
Did anybody come to your public meeting?
One, yes. Uh, one couple came. They are the owners of the new, um, New Lisbon Campground and thought this might have something to do with a possible, uh, widening of I seventy.
Oh.
And they they were worried that maybe the prior owners had made some commitment commitments regarding that with the state. They got this notice and thought, we better show up. And they they were the only ones.
I will say I've received many, uh, several phone calls down in the southern part of the county when they read and if Travis Wikes is listening, people are reading the legal notices in the newspaper because that's where I got a lot of my phone calls from. Asking about the Tiff District at New Lisbon, what it was about. And once I explained it all to them, everybody seemed to be fine, which is why I was curious if the number of phone calls I got was the number of people that came to the, came to your public hearing. So.
They they were the only ones and, uh, they had no objections.
And interestingly enough, they were not one of the people that called me. So I don't have any further questions on this.
No questions.
Nope.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to re- uh, approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten dash eighteen, zero one four, as presented.
Say it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes on the reading of this. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County. The Board of Commissioners hereby finds and determines that it will be in the best interest of the county to expand the boundaries of the original area and designate such expanded area as the new allocation areas to be known as the one Dubinger Edition Area, two Marla Field Edition Allocation Area, and three New Lisbon I seventy Interchange Allocation Area collectively called twenty twenty-four Allocation Areas, each as directed in the amending declaratory resolution. The expansion of the original area and designation of the twenty twenty-four Allocation Areas as described in the amending declaratory resolution is hereby approved. This resolution shall be effective from and after passage, and it just passed. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Next, we have an ordinance number twenty-two zero. It's number is two zero two four seven dash ten dash twenty-three zero zero eight. A zone map change proposal number four seventy-eight partial I D zero zero four dash zero zero three six two dash zero zero and zero zero four dash zero zero two one six dash zero zero and zero zero four dash zero zero three zero four dash zero zero Franklin Township. Tom Green, take it away.
Well, you have before you a, uh, ordinance requesting a zone map change.
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Hello, hello.
Uh, you have before you a, uh, zone map change proposal. Uh, last month, last month on the seventeenth, the planning commission met and, um, voted seven to one to change the zoning of these three parcels. Uh, those will be probably combined into one at some point. Not sure if what Corey's going to do about that, but anyway, those those were passed. That will all be changed to, uh, I one.
Which is light industrial.
Yes, light industrial.
Corey, do you have anything to say?
You want to comment or you're just going to sit there? I didn't have a specific. I just wanted to know if you had any input on that, but because, you know, the zero zero zero, I don't understand exactly where they're all at. So that's why I was curious.
There are four hundred south. Yeah. I still have your, I still have the, uh.
Six thirty-three West County Road, four hundred south.
Corey, I still have your document on here if you want me to.
I have the legal description here if you'd like it.
Do you not know where it is?
I wasn't a hundred percent sure yet, so that's why I wanted to make sure before we did anything that I knew exactly what we were approving.
Corey, you want the the beacon look or the?
This was the we this was discussed before, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Site plan. Uh, not not much detail on site plan because we don't know what's the code. But on the western edge, attention. We figured it to install a buck over landscape buck on the western edge. And then we're also showing the landscape buffer on the northern edge, parallel with four hundred south. That would be the responsibility of the end user. The R D C and it at its spans within the western boundary.
once somebody breaks ground. And then the northern boundary will be the responsibility of the end user.
In present time, there's no plan in place. Okay.
And Steve, if you look up there, you can see three, four hundred south. But I can't see, is that twenty-five west?
Yes.
Okay, I can't see that, I can't see.
Twenty-five or is it one twenty-five?
Yeah, so it's those one, two, and three, right there.
I'm good.
Okay. Any other question?
Actually, just wanted Corey to have to get up.
I'll make the motion to, um, approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash ten dash twenty-three, zero, zero, eight.
Say it.
Motion's been made in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Now be it resolved by the Henry County Planning Commission on the twenty-third day of October, two thousand and twenty-four, that zone change proposal number four seventy-eight proposing to amend the Henry County Indiana Development Code and particularly the zone map was fully considered. Now, therefore, it is decision of the commission that it hereby recommends to the Board of Commissioners, Henry County, Indiana, that Franklin Township Zone Map be changed as to the lots and the land described in Exhibit A attached pursuant to the result of Case B twenty-two seventy-eight, Zone Change Proposal Number four seventy-eight. Be it enacted by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Section One, that the Henry County Indiana Development Code, particularly the Franklin Township Zone Map, is hereby changed as follows. Rezone partials that I read before. Be it further enacted, that the zoning administrators hereb- here, hereby authorized and directed upon the approval and enactment of this ordinance to cause the change to be made on the Franklin Township Zone Map and to note thereon the date and, and passage of the approval of this ordinance. Be it further enacted, that this ordinance will take effect from, from and after this, its passage. It's been adopted the twenty-third day of October, two thousand and twenty-four by a vote of three in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Did John Madison have anything to say?
John?
Anybody else in the audience would like to speak to the commissioners? Yes, ma'am.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, you can, yeah, you can do that.
Come on up.
Come on.
Oh, come on up now.
Come on.
Enjoy the company.
Yeah, we can, we can adjourn with you coming up and looking at that.
Motion's been made to adjourn, is there a second?
Say it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We're adjourned.